To you Jackie, if they have problems with their reassessment.
Of course.
Okay. On. I guess hello.
I still want to ask. You covered about the houses. What about the land?
Yeah.
How do you um assess somebody who has ten acres of land less than somebody who has two acres of land?
Well, one mistake people make is they take the two acres of land and they divide it by two. The, 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 the value, and then they take ten acres and they divide it by ten and they say, wait a minute, ten acres is a whole lot cheaper. Each, each parcel of land has what's called a base lot. And that base lot is usually a lot more than the back acres. Because that, it's assumed that every parcel has the ability to have construction on it. Uh, whether it goes or not. So you could have a base lot that's, uh, forty thousand dollars. And then you could have back acres that go with that for five hundred dollars an acre. And the reason for that is the more land you have, the less somebody pays for each acre as a rule. So that's, that's one of the, one of the things. The second is, if, um, if you have ten acres and you have a base lot of say twenty thousand dollars and then you have back acres of five hundred dollars apiece. And you turn around and you sell the guy next to you, not the guy next to you, somebody new, sell them two acres. Well, they're gonna have one base lot at twenty thousand dollars and they're gonna have a back acre at five hundred dollars. And you lost the two acres and it's only gonna bring your valuation down a thousand dollars and you'll say in the main town, what happened? Um, that's what happened. That is the accepted, uh, process. Uh, for how price land now. On the ocean, or she's got short run it, so you have a, uh, 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 per foot value added to a base lot value that is quite large because it's on the ocean. So that's a whole other category. Plus you have parts of the ocean uh, that is more desirable than how it's like, for example, Boots Cove. Over in that part, Wallace Cove. Um, that is very, very desirable shoreline.
So you're looking at.
Two hundred is natural. And as far as why it's desirable, it's not that people don't spend as much for raw land. So yeah, um, there was, there was a good, there was a good, uh, uh, grouping or, or, or separation of uh, land desirable and less desirable land that was done when this was done in ninety-five and it hasn't changed much. The values have gone up, but the, but the desirable areas in town are closer than, uh, are very close uh, to what they were then. It's just they're at a different, they're at a different price now because of sale prices and the sale prices of raw land and the sale prices of land with the building. Um, so if you have a spot town that's all of a sudden hot, well, not all of a sudden, has been hot. Um, if you don't, if you don't adjust, uh, for example, short run is compared to, to the rest of you that are in, in, in town. If you don't adjust the short run to reflect that increased desire, then what you're doing is you're putting the, the taxes, the day out on everybody. And it was all night's plan. Your house was valued at sixty thousand dollars and your house is really a four hundred thousand dollar house. But you have to look at your neighbors and say, wait a minute. But his house is only valued at sixty thousand dollars and it's sold for three hundred thousand dollars. End of right. Well, you know, uh, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. So even though back when prices were low and everybody thought, oh, that's reasonable for me, yeah. It really wasn't. You're still paying all the taxes. Um, it's just that you've got, you can blame it on the taxes and not blame it on the valuation. But really, it's six of one, half dozen of the other. Now, if that answers your question, but.
I, I under- I understand about if somebody owns a hundred acres of land way out and they live on one acre up front. But there's some on these tax things that own three acres, which is their homestead, which is not out in the middle of nowhere, not in woods, which is less taxes than mine and I own one, one seven acres on the land. One point seven acres.
Okay.
That's just one, that's just one example. There's all kinds.
Um, some of them, um.
That's why I wanted to know how you value each piece of land.
There's, there's parts out on the old county road going towards, um, the next Santa Rosa that do tend to be, uh, cheaper value for the base lot and the back land. Uh, I, I did not, uh, again, I did not mess too much with the difference, with the difference between, uh, one area of land and another area of land as far as that were on two different cost levels. Because I didn't, I didn't see the need to. I thought that, that what, what was there was, was working pretty good. They just needed to be updated to two thousand twenty-three. Um, again, this is one of the problems is I would have to look at yours and look at theirs and say, huh, you know, this is why, or I don't know why, or, you know, if that's why it's not good to have specific questions when you're in a group because I, I can't, you know, I don't have all the, I don't have all the information I need to answer it. I can give you the general information. Um, and that is these, these different cost levels for land were already there. And, and the sales, they seem to be working good. They seem to still be, uh, effective.
Thank you. Thank you Jackie.
Too much.
We have another question. I think she wants you to call and give the examples. She needs the facts to give you a better answer.
She can look at the things. I'm not giving her any names.
Well, she'll, she'll be able to look at the neighborhood that you live in and see where you're talking about without giving any names.
It's not just my neighborhood. It's all over town.
Anyway, it's forty dollars. Everybody's tax assessment.
Yes, I know. That's how I got it. I went down through every page there.
We have another question.
So all the conservationists, they don't have to pay any tax base, which we have to make up. Correct?
Why?
The conservationists, they have no tax base. We have to make that up. Now, a lot of that is shore property and we're losing a lot of taxes. Why can't we? Why do we have to give them free access?
Can you say that again, Carol?
She's asking about, um, the, the land trust and the conservative land, the fact that they pay no taxes.
Unfortunately, they are protected by law.
It takes three hundred people to pay a thousand dollars to make up the three hundred thousand that he's not paying taxes on. Just for.
Just one.
So that's just one.
Just one.
Yeah.
So a thousand dollars for somebody from Lubeck for three hundred people is the law.
There's seventy-four right here that don't pay any taxes. Jackie, and, and, and there's probably another fifty that pay five percent taxes or ten percent taxes.
And that doesn't seem fair.
So Jackie, we are paying.
But this is something Jackie cannot do, do anything with that. It's stay out.
You know, what she can do, but you know, I didn't even hear my question. I just said Jackie. I mean, I'm gonna ask a simple question. Am I allowed?
Yes, absolutely. James, go ahead.
Thank you. Jackie, in evaluating the taxes in the town of Lubeck, did you evaluate all the tax-free property, all the deep oceanfront property? Every benefit to get into value so the taxpayers in town would know how much money that they're losing each year?
Yes.
What would, uh, what would the, uh, what would that, uh, valuation be on deep oceanfrontage, second, third, fourth title property? What would that, what would that cost be?
I have the totals, Jackie. Do you want me to give them to her, to him?
Yeah, that would be great. Well, Carol, Carol has worked diligently to get the totals of all that property.
So Cobb's Hook Shores, Cobb's Hook Shores has twenty-four properties valued at three million seven hundred eighty-one. Oh, I'm sorry, not that. Yes, valued at three million seven hundred eighty-one thousand six hundred.
So at the tax rate and everything, what would they pay in taxes each year?
They would pay fifty-eight thousand two hundred and thirty-six.
Okay. So we fought this before when I was a selectman in this town. Drove three hours, talked three minutes mainly to secretaries and custodians because they didn't want to hear us. Because the state has the run on the town, on the value they have, and then the state has the run on all the land. We, as a town, couldn't even vote trying to do it the diplomatic way on, we don't want no more land in this area to go out of the tax base because the burden's gonna be set over on the act. It's been a while, Mike, since we were on the board. I'm sure there's more land that's gone into it. My question is, out of all the taxes, everything has got to be paid. When are we gonna try to do something to get it to stop? Because it's not gonna go away. Well, I can, I can help you with that, James. About four years ago, we had a meeting. We got all the towns together. Okay. Okay. We break down the lighting. And we met with Will Tool and Mary Moore. Yep. They presented a bill and it went down faster than it hit them. Oh, wow. Because who runs this state? Son and name. Yeah. But see, the thing is, it gets to, and I, I've done it in another town that I lived into with a, a school system. The states are one simple thing, but they keep dropping all, all these cookies to you, making it sweet that if you do this, this, and this, you're gonna get this. And I think sometimes it's time to say, you know, we're gonna tax the people, tax them fairly in the town. We're gonna take care of our school, the municipality. And if there's any money left over, we'll send it to the state. Because we're being driven out of everything that we supposedly quote own. And when you can't vote on something in a town, which you're, that's supposed to give you a little more power and our vote don't count because somebody said something?
Well, I talked to, uh, I talked to Sally Gag and it was a, uh, municipal lawyer about this because I have two other towns, Dupen and, um, Bucks, both have a large amount of, uh, tax-free property in their town that is killing them. And I said to her, um, when is the state gonna start coming up on, um, tax-free, you know, on these, on these tax-exempt properties? And she said of anything, they get looser. And I said, that just makes me crazy because I won't go into details, but, but the, the, some of these tax-free entities just tell me, I, I can't believe that they're tax-free. I mean, they're not. It just, it just a- angers me and, and it's really hard. You're not the only town that's having this problem. I will say, you have the problem worse.
Right, we're financial.
Town I work for.
And, and James, to address part of the two, the state has thirty-eight parcels of land in Lubeck. Yeah. That's tax-free.
Nine million dollars.
Worth nine million dollars, same name. Yeah, and yet they'll set what the rates are on the sale of people's homes. And that's their side. So they'll go to the other side of the equation and pick that to death. But look, look at the other side on, well, if you've got all this land, it's worth all this money, why don't you give us a big rebate on adding our taxes down? Because they're most certainly holding it. And that's what we tried to do. They go shock downs quick. Wow, wow.
How about, uh, any others?
I just, uh, yeah, there's Maine Coreservate Trust has thirteen properties valued at seven million eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Down East Coast Community has eleven properties valued at two million one hundred and eighty-four thousand. And the state of Maine wins at thirty-three properties valued at nine million two hundred and eighty-six. That total tax income loss is three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars five hundred and eighty-six.
Wow.
For one year. So it's a lot of money. And the only thing I can think of is to see if we can lobby the entire state to have a percentage to cap off in every, and go to bad for every municipality and say that we do not, right now we're at nine and a half percent.
We're, we're gonna have to go over the state.
So, I mean, ten percent's gonna kill us. So we, and I don't know whether they'll ever take it away from somebody, but going forward, you need, we need to stop it. You're right. At least we stop.
Well, I think maybe if the towns can get together and not pay the state nothing, after a certain amount of time, they'll, they'll, they'll look at you in a different light. Because they can't arrest us all.
Yeah, but they can stop sending the revenue sharing and homestead ring and taking like.
Take it, take it, take it, and go pay no taxes.
So why, why can't they make these pe- tax-free people pay at least a percentage?
So long, the state has to.
I asked, I asked, uh,
How can you revamp the law?
I asked, um, to, to, uh, consider paying in.
And what did they say?
They said, they said they don't like to do it like that, but they like to just pay projects.
Uh, we have another question, Jackie.
Actually, I'd like to ask the board if they still have it in their charter that they have the power to negotiate in lieu of taxes with these organizations.
That's what Jackie did.
No, you, you have that power. I don't think she has, no.
I've got, what?
We have another question, yes.
Um, I'm not understanding this. I would like to clarify, is she a licensed appraisal person? Who? It's a woman here.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So what I, what I would like to know is, like, let's say her evaluation is, I'll go with crazy.
I am a state certified tax assessor. That is different than an appraiser.
Right.
An appraiser does your house, that's all they do. And they go and compare it to different things. Appraisal is much more depth. Uh, an assessor is a mass appraisal process, which is what I do. I'm also a, um, certified public office officer, uh, certified moment inspector. And I was on the board, so I've been in my town for twenty years, which I think, uh, makes me very sensitive to, um, taxes.
So if, if, if your estimation comes in higher than, let's say I have my house appraised, can I appeal that?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Would you have a problem with your reassessment now? You're welcome to call Jackie and talk to her about it. She can explain to you why she did and why yours is different than your neighbor's or all that. She's available for that. Any more questions?
Of course, I have a Jackie. How many homes did you actually go in and physically visit?
I went to all twelve hundred homes.
That's a lot.
I asked people if they wanted me to look inside. If they wanted me to look inside, I did. If they didn't, I didn't. It used to be, it used to be assessors used to just hydrate in your house and go in and look or ask, tell you if they wanted to go in and look and penalize you with a letter, go in and look. Um, those kinds have changed. People don't, people resent that. So I asked if they want to. And then the other thing I do is I put a card in everybody's door saying, please call me, um, I'd like to talk to you or come visit you and look at it. Uh, knowing call well, that probably sixty percent of them aren't gonna monitor, call me or respond until they get their bill. And that's fun. I, I, that's human nature. I get it. So if somebody says to me now, like I had, I'm gonna take it free yesterday. I want you to come look. Okay, I'll come look. It's not too late. I'll come look.
Okay, I'm gonna call you out because I have several properties in town. You never visited any of them and I never received anything. And I've talked to several other people down here that have the same thing.
That is true.
You never came to mine. These are all left any cards.
It is true. I'm sorry, it is.
It is not true and I'm not gonna argue with you. I'm done.
I think it is true and that most of the people here could vote to it.
It is not true. I've been to every house.
You absolutely did not.
And I put a card on every door.
Absolutely not.
Then it flew away or somebody took it and forgot to tell you it was there. But I went to every single house. And I defy anybody to say I didn't. Amanda, I did.
Well, at my house, you, I was actually there when you came. And I offered for you to come to my house and you told me, no, I don't have to do that.
Well, what, what was your house?
A four hundred square foot tiny house.
Is it not?
Four hundred square foot tiny house, ma'am.
Oh, a little tiny house?
Yeah, that got evaluated at seventy-one thousand dollars.
I, I didn't hear that.
She said she has a four hundred square foot house evaluate, that was evaluated at seventy-one thousand dollars.
Okay, all right. Well, if you'd like me to come and look at it, I will. I, again, we're talking about, I, I can't argue with you because I don't know where it is and I can't look at the picture and I don't know what the circumstances were.
Well, that's a good question. Did you take pictures of everybody's house, Jackie, when you were doing that?
I took two pictures of everybody's house and I did a diagram.
Oh, very good.
A lot of people, a lot of people have dogs that got rambunctious and that was why a lot of people didn't want me to come in.
And you measured the houses too, correct, Jackie? Some of them?
I, I did. I, I, I did. Um, some of them that had, uh, sketches that were good, that were already there, unless I thought there was something wrong with the sketch, I might have used them, but then later on I found that, that, um, some of those couldn't be trusted as well as they were. They'd be off by a foot or two. So that's one of the things I tell people to make sure you can see outside measurement, not the inside measurement. Measure the outside of the house if you think it's wrong and check it. And, uh, I'll gladly, uh, I'll gladly, uh, remeasure it and make sure that, uh, and see if it's not right. And if one of the houses is bound to be some mistakes.
So we, we all have your, do you, do everybody's got your number or business cards that Jackie's on over there and we'll let her go and rest because she's gonna get a lot of phone calls tomorrow.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jackie. Thank you, Jackie.
Is somebody trying to call in?
Danny Grant. He must be lying. He doesn't care. He lets him lighten. He'll be just being nosy.
Okay. Now, Jackie's gone. Is there any other things that public would like to share with this whiteboard?
So the only way to lower the rate is for you guys to drop the mill rate to lower our taxes?
We don't, we don't, we don't create the mill rate. It's a formula that comes from, yeah, okay, so three, three million dollars for the town. Um, you calculate how many people, how, how many taxpayers you have in the town. You divide by that amount and then you multiply the mill rate by, per thousand. So twenty-three was last year, twenty-three and change. It was twenty-four dollars.
Twenty-four.
Okay, so twenty, it was twenty-five dollars per a thousand in your assessed value. Now, what, what has been a little bit confusing until they pointed out to me today was there was, um, a person who had a house and it was, uh, the tax bill was like twenty-nine hundred. And this year's, it went down. His, um, tax bill went down, but his assessments went way up. But it didn't go up enough so that when you multiplied by fifteen, it actually, I had to explain to someone in the office today that just because your, your tax, your tax bill went down doesn't mean that your assessment didn't go up. So you've gotta compare, and I have twenty-two and twenty-three here if you wanna look, compare that, um, land and, and building. Both with last year.
It's on your tax bill from last year.
Right, they have it, but I have the whole twenty, twenty-two and twenty-three year because I've been comparing different peoples and just seeing, it's, it's complicated. I, I, if I were you, I'd definitely, everybody here, I would definitely call them.
The confusing part is, if she did twelve hundred homes, took pictures of them in drawings and everything like that, it cut the time in half that it was supposed to take you less than, I mean.
She didn't come to every home. She lied through her teeth.
She didn't come to mine. She did not leave any card.
When she came to my house, she didn't come to the house. She went out behind it, looked at the dogs. Which she shouldn't have been out there to begin with.
Did you go out and talk to her?
Excuse me?
Did you go out and talk to her when she was there?
My son came down. I was not home. He came down and told them to leave.
Oh, well, then she probably did.
Well, not a lot. We had a few words.
Unless she wanted the dogs to bite her.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
But you don't, you don't go out by a bunch of strange dogs. They've never seen her before.
Well, I'm just, I'm, you know, you know.
Well, that's what they'll get at my house.
A lot, a lot.
Tried to, got them.
Right. A lot of it drove us is there's some houses around here that aren't even finished.
Oh, I know that.
For seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I know.
Now, I remember thirty years ago, over thirty years ago, we used to sit there, have a beer and laugh that Bar Harbor was coming someday. You know, we used to laugh about it.
There have been.
Here we are.
It's here. Here it is.
We don't have enough to offer about out of the door, so.
We, we don't have any, any industry here, any kind of jobs in town. It's all set tax burdens. It all goes on all of us.
We don't have.
They can all, they can all work from home ever since COVID, so it doesn't matter where they're at.
But I mean, we don't have the factories anymore. We don't have the, the nursing home. We, you know, we don't have any of that.
There was nothing.
So it's all on.
Real estate.
It's all on all of us now.
Well, they had a fit when they moved the dog agenda away. So I could imagine if somebody wants to put a business on you.
Imagine that, that's right, yeah.
And they struggle stopping that.
Huh?
They struggle stopping that now.
Yeah, it's, it's a it's a tough thought. I mean, and I know where you're coming from. We're kids the same age. Our kids can't afford to buy a home.
That's your workforce.
They can't afford to be out on the wrong to begin with. They're gonna live with us till we grow.
And it's not just here. It's, it's all of these. Bar Harbor has had to do a moratorium on a lot of the buildings. So they are feeling it. Amanda, sorry.
It's just that I find it, it's like Lubeck alone has lost seven diggers this year just because there's no place for them to live. And they're starting families and they can't live in mom and dad's basement anymore.
Well, here's the thing too, that we're losing diggers. Losing people to mow lawns at a local. Now, losing plow guys. You're losing a lot right now. And partly it's because come wintertime, there's nobody here. There's nobody here. Everybody goes away in the wintertime. Everything closes up.
Well, I can, don't you go to Florida for the winter.
You talk to some of the local businesses that run year round here.
Who would that be?
The IGA?
Well, well, there's more, there's more, there's more. You make money for four months, you break the week for four months and you lose money for four months.
Oh, no, they can rely on the Canadians. They got them all.
Not everybody, not everybody.
Most of them.
The Dollar General's paying eleven thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars. Taxes. Bar Harbor Bank is paying seven thousand two hundred and fifty-four.
They were paying thirteen thousand last year.
Who what?
Bar Harbor Bank.
They were paying thirteen thousand last, well, you know what? It was last year.
Thirteen thousand.
Does it have a calculation for your own account?
But we will get that on the, um.
Bar Harbor Bank, you're right. Be thirteen thousand. So let's see. The building went down. The, uh, acres, the land went up and the building went down.
Well, I was doing a waterfront project. She had a bad cop. Oh, I know. I offered for her to come into my house and my dogs were in trouble. So there was no issue.
So did the land, the land go up? I mean, some places the land went down?
No, this land went up. The ground only went down slightly.
My house served thirty years, my wife's house. Thirty years. Other than the size of the house, I went to the town.
Thank you, ladies. Did you get this? Did you get her phone number?
They want, they want two hundred and forty dollars.
Okay, we need, uh, either reassess or adjourn before we talk. So I'd like to give anybody else an opportunity to say something directly to us in case, especially things that you were upset about with Jackie. She's not on here now. Just anything you want us to bring to her attention, because we do the time to say it.
Is there a time limit for us to be able to, you know, get appointments?
Is there a time limit for us to be able to, you know, get appointments with her and sort this all out or what?
I would say time is of the essence with all of you, that, you know, you need to just get through to her and.
Yes. Assessment of Batman, you have a hundred and eighty-five days in the data commitment.
Don't wait that long.
Yeah, probably, don't wait that long.
That's her girl.
Michael.
Was, there a time period where Jackie reported to you of her progress?
Yep.
Yes.
She did.
Okay, she did come to meetings and, and.
Yep, yep.
And she claimed she took twelve hundred photographs, she's got twelve hundred photographs.
She has to have.
But that does not prove you got out of the car or put a card in the door.
And she resketched everything.
I had no notification and kept waiting. So I have to agree with some people who say they never saw her. And I, I really doubt that, that she accomplished twelve hundred actual site visits. I'm not saying she didn't take twelve hundred pictures. But it doesn't seem like from what everybody's sharing that she actually did due diligence to show up at each of these houses she claims she did.
Well, you guys all call her, and I'll come to your house, then you'll know.
Right, right. So she's still in your employ, she's still in your employ.
She's still, she's still in the reassessment.
And she's gonna be our assessor like I'm forward.
And part of the issue, part of the issue is, and I'm gonna be blunt.
Yeah.
We had somebody that worked here that didn't do his damn job for many years.
Stop, stop.
And that's, no, that's the way it is.
There it is. It doesn't seem to make any difference at this point, which only.
Yeah, we're not, that's why we're in the place we're in.
Yep, I totally agree, Jason.
Anything else on your ass? I go for it, sir.
Second, all in favor?
Are we doing exactly the same?
No, so.
Okay, so, so. All in favor?
I'm agreeing, yeah.
Yeah, I know you're right. Uh, we've been advised by the lawyers to wait four weeks.